Okay.
Everything is on and recording?
Okay. County Council Meeting to Order. Land Business, Pleasure Allegiance.
Brad, would you please do so?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Business Roll Call.
Ron Bacon.
Here.
Pat Brooks.
Here.
Rob Demmett.
Here.
Brad Orton. Richard Reed.
Present.
Greg Richmond.
Here.
Chris Westine.
Here.
Okay. See, first thing on is, we don't have any tabled items, do we? Approval of minutes.
I'd like to request that we also include, if it's possible, the October 21 Public Hearing, the Adoption Meeting, since you all got that, so one pager, it was easy to read. Include that, and with that, I would move that we approve October 7 Regular Meeting, October 7 Public Hearing, and the October 21 Public Hearing Adoption.
I'll second. Got a motion by Greg.
Those were amended, you saw the amendments.
Yes. Okay, motion by Greg and second by Rob, any other questions or discussions? All in favor? Motion carried seven zero. Okay, Special Appropriation Circuit Court. Judge, nice to see you.
Nice to see you, good evening, Judge Granger, Work Circuit Court, I'll start you off in the right direction. I need half of what I'm asking for.
Oh, good, well, there you go.
Oh, that means next year I have to come back.
Some comments in the back there. So you want to change it to 25,000?
Yes, sir.
That will get you through the year, you hope?
I believe so.
I believe so, okay. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Rob, second by Greg, everybody's fighting to get on that.
I like the precedent you're setting, thank you.
I'm getting booed.
Okay, any more discussions or questions? All in favor? Motion carried, seven zero.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Come more often that way. Okay, Sheriff Business, Canine Fun.
Good afternoon, Sheriff Wilder, this first one is actually just a special fun, we're just spending down out of it, so it's not really actually an appropriation, it's just been down from our own account there, but it has to be appropriated, correct, did I say that right, Crystal?
Yep.
Motion approved. Motion by Greg.
Second.
Second by Rick. That's $2,000, you're not cutting that in half, are you thinking that?
No.
Started asking. Any other discussion? All in favor? Carry seven zero. Okay, Inmate Meals.
Currently, right now, I have about $9,000 left before we pay this past two months. Year coming up, November, December, we roughly are running right now about $16,000 to $18,000 monthly. I'm sure, as I said this once before, your grocery bills, I'm sure you see going up, so has our bills there at the jail. And not only that, but what we're running into now, it's even like Wabash, I think it's Wabash Foods or Valley Foods, bought out or something, it's harder and harder to get people to service us at good prices. There's fewer and fewer businesses, and the ones that are not really geared towards jail, you know, and how we prepare meals. So that's about what we're running, but I will say, like, our head cook right now, she does a great job, she runs to Royal King, Walmart, does different things when she sees, you know, bread or milk on sale, so we do do a lot of things to try to limit the cost of our food, but, you know, it is what it is, I guess, it's still going up, no matter how we try to cut costs.
How you look at it.
I do believe that amount will get us through the end of the year.
That's what I was getting ready to ask.
And a lot of these, Crystal, see, we try to remove money as best we can without income for appropriations, but just, this is one of those, I believe we're going to need it, because we're going to be switching some other things throughout the year to make other ends meet, so.
Have a motion. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Chris. Second by Pat. No discussion, all in favor? Motion carried seven zero. Inmate Medical.
This, once again, is just a spend down from our own account, so it's, we're just appropriating from our own account to pay down so we can cover some of the medical costs, we already have a line on to spend out of for this.
Okay. Make a motion to approve. Motion by Rob. Second.
Second.
Second by Greg. No discussion, all in favor? Carry seven zero.
And Mr. President, I still, I have two other things that spoke to Crystal, if you don't mind, I'll be brief, but our commissary, that I present many, a lot of times, we have a ordinance now I can spend out of it. But I wanted to still come to you, even though by ordinance, I don't think I need to, I just kind of, I don't even know if I'm looking for approval, I'm more just maybe making you aware, but I am going to start making some large purchases out of there. We are reactivating, or putting back together, our Sheriff's Special Operation Team, called Tactical Team, SWAT Team, call it whatever you want, but the need is there, it's always been there, we've had this team for years, and then I'm going to say about six or eight years ago, we kind of disbanded, we didn't have the guys that were really wanting to put in the time and the effort, because it's, the training has to be, because these guys are trained and go above and beyond what the normal training is, can make entries, perimeter, and high-risk situations, and we're just starting to see more and more of these standoffs with people with their mental health, and the standoff with police, so, and just the protection of our own community, we just feel the need again to have this team, we have a lot of guys that are willing and wanting to do it. So I'm going to purchase a lot of this equipment out of commissary, so it's not going to cost the county any additional funds or come to you for any money, but I'm just kind of, you're going to see some large purchases, and that's what it is to equip these guys and buy them some of the equipment that's needed to protect, you know, our community. And it's the thing that, you know, Boomville, Chandler, Newburgh will use, because none of them have a team. I don't really like calling a SWAT team, that's the old days. A lot of teams, even like Evansville, we've been meeting with them as we're setting this team up. A lot of teams now are more, we call them almost a perimeter, used to the old days, you kind of think of it busting doors and running in, but it's more of a perimeter to protect the community and other officers, and the person that you're trying to apprehend or protect from hurting themselves or others, so, but there is a need for it in our county, and we always have had the need, and we at least now have officers and several that are wanting to do it again and be involved, so we're looking to get that back up and running, so, just kind of wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. And then the last thing I have, that'll be quick, is there any questions about that? I don't, now that I need to kind of move on or anything. The only other last thing is, by statute, I brought this back when it was passed, supposed to do this presentation, or at least present to you some sort of way of our pension, so I'm going to leave here, I unfortunately don't have 10 books, but I'm going to leave it for the next 30 days and for our next meeting, then if there's any questions, but it is a kind of review of how our pension is doing, our pension is well-funded, that's why the statute was passed, because some counties are not funding their pensions as they're supposed to by state statute. We're very fortunate that our councils always, previous ones and our current councils, always funded our pension. We meet yearly on several occasions, our Pension Board, meet with our Mayor Board, meet with Old National, and keep a close eye on our pension, because we understand it's a very huge asset that we have as officers when we retire, so I will leave this, and then next month I would take any questions, after people have a time to review it, or if they want to reach out during the month and ask me about it and things like that. But, you know, budget time comes, you guys always receive that letter, kind of gives you three different values to what you have to put in, what you should put in, and what you could, and you guys always put what you, you know, the higher amounts, and that's kept our thing, and Old National's done a very good job funding that and keeping our, you know, assets, I think we're over 20 million in our pension right now, so it's a very big account, so.
Okay, let's leave it with Crystal.
Yep. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, 5A, Commissioner Business, Post-Closure. I think you missed four.
Four.
Oh, I'm sorry, I did.
Just approve it if you want.
Just jump right over there.
Ben Labart, Parks Department, you also got all the information Crystal gave you. When I advertised the additional, between then and now, I was still trying to get prices from other people, and I was able to get some lower prices, as well as, I went through the budget last week with Audrey, and we came up with some additional money we can use, so the amount of the additional actually is 10,500 instead of 18. You should have a description of all the vehicles we have, we have seven vehicles. Since I've been there, it's, I've been there right at 20 years, we've only replaced three of them, so, you know, you just got to replace them every once in a while. Most of our vehicles are in good shape, except two are in pretty rough shape. I just got a vehicle from the Sheriff's Department, which was very, it was a big benefit to us, our old patrol vehicle that we used, the guys patrol the park at night, was an old Toyota, and it had over 200,000 miles on it, and it was starting to nickel and dim, so, we got a Durango from Sheriff's Department, and that was much appreciated. This additional I'm asking for will replace the truck that the laborer drives, it's a 2003 F-150. It's got 130,000 miles on it, but, you know, most of the miles are in the park going 10, 15,000 miles an hour, and it's just rough on it, so, if you all saw the pictures, then the seat's just gone. So it's just, you know, it's a need, so I'll take any questions you have, it's for, the estimate I got is for an F-150.
Okay. I was confused reading how you're going to finance it.
Okay, so, we have some money in our budget for equipment, and I'm going to use the
25 budget?
Yes, and I'm going to use money, I'm going to use our equipment money for the 2025 budget, and then the 2026 budget.
So will you encumber the 25 budget money?
Yes. So the last two years, we replaced both of our mowers, I used that equipment money to replace the two mowers we use at the park, and so the two mowers we have are two years old. One of them's one-year-old, one of them's two-years-old, the rest of our equipment, right now, is in good shape, so I think I can get away with doing this, that's why I'm asking now, because I think our equipment's in good enough shape to where I can get away with
Get by with another year.
Yep.
So you're going to encumber the 25 budget amount for equipment, and then the 26, we budgeted a certain amount for equipment. So those two, what's this 10,500, is that it? And are you going to put that, this is going to be, the 10,500 will be into the 25 budget?
He'll encumber that.
You're going to encumber that too?
Correct.
Okay.
I'm sure between Audrey and Crystal, they can figure out how to do it, I just need to, yeah, and also
She'll need the invoice before the end of the year in order for you to
Yes, and I'll get that, I'll make sure I get that. And also, Greg, we get, I mean, it's not very much, but we get $1,000 a year for furniture, for cabin furniture. Our cabin furniture's in good shape, so I'm going to use $1,000 from this year's cabin furniture money. We get money for boats, you know, the boats that we rent, we have to purchase boats when we, you know, when we need to replace them. We don't need to replace one this year, so I can use $1,000 from boat, so I just, I took as much money out of our budget as I could, and what I need to, you know, for the rest is 10,500, and I'll be able to
Clears it up for me.
Yeah.
I'll save you for comments, but yeah. Okay. I think you're doing it the right way, it's the way we'd like to see it. So, any other questions? Any motion?
Well, maybe I should speak beforehand on this, just to say that I went out and looked at the truck with Ben, I don't know if anyone else did or not, that I can verify that the truck is very worn out. Sometimes, you know, sometimes I hear 130,000 miles, and I think, well, that's not so bad, but like Ben said, this truck's in a park, it stays in a park most of the time, so it has the wear and tear of something with 200,000 or 300,000 miles.
We use it as long as we can.
Definitely needs replaced, and so when I saw that, and talking to Ben and everything, and I said, oh, gosh, Ben, it's a great plan he has for paying for this, but I hated to see him use all of his budget money, and, you know, and not have any equipment money left in '26. Ben said, I think we're okay, I think we've got pretty good equipment and all that, so, quite honestly, my thought was to motion to approve more than he was asking, and then he comes in and asks for even less. So I just don't want to see him run out, if you do need a tractor, or lawnmower, or a boat, or whatever you might need. Just that thought, you know?
I will say, if we did need a tractor, I'd be coming for you for money, because I'm not going to get it with what's in our budget.
We all understand how that works, so, yeah, personally, I was good at the 18, thinking you might need more than that, but now you've come in even at 10, so, I want a motion for him to have the 18, but that's just my thinking.
I mean, I think I can do it this way, and
But if you do a 10, if you do the 18, then he's going to, how's it going to encumber the others? Because he's not going to have an invoice for it.
What do you mean?
Well, he, technically, he would.
He would use less of next year's money.
Right. I would use less of next year's equipment money.
But with that said, that's just my thought there, but I'll motion for the approval for the 10,000.
Motion by Chris.
10,500.
Oh, is it 10,500, sorry, I wrote 10, I'll motion to approve 10,500.
Second.
Second by Pat. More discussion? All in favor? Seven zero.
Thank you, the only other thing is the new trail that you guys approved, the additional appropriation for is done, I don't know how many of you have seen it, I don't know if Brad's seen it.
I haven't been out there yet.
I haven't been that way.
It's really nice.
I've been going in the back.
So you should come out and look at it, it's really nice, it goes from the gatehouse back to the beach, and it's up along the woods, and gets people off the road, so.
Good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ben. Okay, now, Commissioner Business, Post-Closure. That apparently didn't
I would like to comment something related to this, I read where Owensboro is putting in a methane recovery system.
Sounds same thing.
Be nice if
We need to recover some gas.
Having the monitor, we could recover it.
Yeah, we've been at Steersman County Administrator for Warwick County Commissioners, the first item is Fund Number 1166, which is the landfill post-closure, there's only one account in that, and that is the expense line item 3111. Currently have a balance of $3,111.78. We have outstanding contracted amount of $4,960, and that is for the, they're actually testing for methane and doing a mitigation plan out on the site right now, so we've been getting bills a lot more regularly than what you've gotten in the past, because they're working with IDIM on a plan to try to track it.
Track it or use it?
Pardon me, track, it's what it looks like to me.
We used to have a fund that had quite a bit of money in it, is it gone?
Yeah, no, no, this is that fund.
Okay, it says the balance is 3,111.
Of appropriated funding.
No, appropriated.
Appropriated, sorry.
Motion approved. Motion by Greg. Second. By Rob. More discussion, all in favor? Seven zero.
Okay, the next is out of the courthouse budget, Utilities 33000. The balance is $775.33, and all of the invoices you see are outstanding and due this week, and I don't have any money to pay them, they come to $19,536.26. I'm sure I'll be back the next month to get more money, because after we pay these bills, there'll be about 5,000 left.
As I say, you're going to need more money.
Yeah, I didn't realize, didn't know what the
But we can't give you more than 25 tonight.
Right, exactly, no, I already know that.
Okay. Motion? Make a motion to approve the 25,000 appropriation. Motion by Rob. Second. Second. By Chris. Okay, any more discussion? All in favor? Carry seven zero.
Okay, the next is out of Commissioner's budget, there's two, the first is Legal Services Fund Account 31200. The current balance, and I know that this may look different if you're looking at the schedule of balances for some reason on your sheet, but the current balance is $2,299.83. We have paid most of the October bills, but I still have three that I need to pay, that total $15,986.3. I'm asking for $60,000, hoping that'll cover, the balance will cover November and December.
So you know you're going to have that much more legal bills?
Oh, yeah, this is through October that's outstanding, so we don't have November's or December's, no, we don't. So there were some extra legal bills that we had to pay. There was a EOC lawsuit that we had to pay almost $10,000 to another attorney to handle, and then the Radon case is starting to go into deposition, so that's why you see Fine and Hatfield, they're handling that, and they've already told me in advance that there will be some big bills for depositions in December. So I'm trying to plan.
So your request feels that this should take care of
I hope.
I hope next year will be better.
Yeah. Hopefully.
Do you want to go ahead and explain juvenile detention since
Oh, yeah, okay, I'm sorry.
Same line, yeah.
Yeah, okay, juvenile detention, that's by contract, we have the balance of $30,265.20, and we owe November and December's payment by contract that hopefully doesn't go over, but I rounded it to $17,000, so that should come, I think it's $16,454, something like that. But I wanted to make sure there was enough.
Okay, need a motion.
Could we do these two separately, so I can abstain from the first one?
Guess we can. And then, to pay the legal services, $60,000. So moved. By Chris. Have a second? I'll second. My Rob. Okay, more discussion on that?
So, the legal expenses, again, we pay so much and this is due to, you said, the Radon and lawsuits, is that what this primarily is?
Well, there were two extra attorney's bills this month, one was a settlement, and the other was a former employee who filed an EOCC case in Chicago, and they had to be represented in Chicago. That was almost $10,000, and the settlement was five, so that's $15,000. In addition to what we normally would be paying every month. Thank you. Okay.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor? Okay, all opposed? Motion carries four to one, two abstain. The abstentions were Pat and Brad.
Yes.
And the nay was Rick. Okay, now, juvenile detention, $17,000. Motion to approve. Motion by Brad. Second. Second by Rob. No more discussion on that? All in favor? Motion carry seven zero.
Okay, you can flip your page, the next is Animal Control Donation Fund 4111. That fund has appropriated, right now, $37.41. This is actually money that the animal control collects from donations that we take in, and we're going, we'd like to put 2,500 to other services and charges.
Motion approved. Motion by Greg. Second. Second by Brad. More discussion? All in favor? Carry seven zero. Carry seven zero.
Okay, last is Fund 1222, which is the E911 Fund for Contract Services. I have typed on that last page a list of the bills that are outstanding. Quite a few of them are due right now and I've just been holding on to them to come to the meeting. There is currently $470.57 in Contract Services and as you can see, there's a list, US Digital, Mini to Central Square and then the AT&amp;T lease. Some of these are not till December, but I went ahead and put all of them down because we already have them and total the outstanding to be $427,147.12.
Where's Central Square?
This is the new RMS and CAD system for the sheriff's office countywide for all police agencies countywide and firing EMS and everything, use the CAD system, places holding dispatch and RMS is the report writing and EMS is the jail. This was approved at Commissioner's meeting a year ago. Yeah, a year ago or something. We go live, we're in training right now. We actually go live with everything on December 2nd, I believe.
So is, is the monthly fee maybe going to be the 8,400 or?
No, it's.
Shouldn't be really.
It's an annual.
It really shouldn't be a monthly fee once it's live.
That's the annual fee and then the ATT lease at the bottom is fourth quarter. That is, so that amounts times four. So I think that's why, that's what was in.
Oh, I just meant there was just, the Central Square, there were just a lot of different.
Different, yeah, there, we're in training and there's a lot of the, I don't even understand how to explain it, but things going on as they send people into training, like they have training all day today, I'm going to training tomorrow. It's, it's, it's in the live date is January the 2nd. There, there is contracts.
Yeah, there's, and it's broken down.
I was just curious what it, what it was.
In the future, we've got to be careful with this fund because we've used it a lot lately.
Tell him. As far as I know for next year, I didn't change the budget and all I really am aware of is that annual fee, the 257,000, 257,684 and the AT&amp;T lease, which I think that goes until 2029.
There's enough in there to cover both of those.
Yeah, and that's in Contract Services.
The, the central dispatch reimbursement went away, but you budgeted some employees in there, but it was for less than what the central dispatch reimbursement was. So you should be okay.
Yeah, because there's not very many other line items really.
You don't try to face something else out.
Not going.
Just bringing it up.
I know.
It's going to be tight next year.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Need a motion? Motion to approve. My Brad.
I'll second.
Second by Rob. Any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carries seven zero.
See you next time. Thank you.
Okay, Handicap Policy, Inverseness Transfers and Corrections. I can go through all of these. One, Number 6A, Additional Appropriations, Sheriff Reimbursement, Sheriff Motorized Equipment, 6B, Sheriff Ordinance, Sell Back, Lieutenant, Sell Back 40 Hours, $1,597.12. Sergeant, Sell Back 5, 40 Hours, $1,419.82. Jail Commander, Sell Back 40 Hours, $1,182.23. Jailer, Sell Back 32 Hours, $717.17. C, Now We Already Resignation, Dispatcher, Resignation Payout, 17 and 1/2 Hours, $392.20. Jailer, Resignation Payout, 10 Hours, $237.20. Deputy Resignation Payout, 143 Hours, $3,721.
That, that one is actually $3,949.44.
3,900.
And $49.
Forty-nine dollars.
And 44 cents.
Forty-four cents.
It's the same. It was a duplicate, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Need motion to approve.
I'm making motion to approve.
Motion by Pat. Need a second? I'll second it. Okay, any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Okay, Council Resolution, Transfer Homestead Credit Balance. We got the resolution?
Well, I had it in my hands earlier. Did you print a copy? Did anyone else print it?
I didn't.
I've got a copy of it, Chris.
Thank you, Red. It's in the stack somewhere, but.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Warwick County Council Resolution Number 2025 dash.
Eight.
Eight, zero eight. Resolution, County Council, Warwick County, Indiana, authorized the transfer from Fund 6104 Homestead Credit Rebate to the County General Fund. Is that all I need to read?
That's all you need to read. It's a matter of housekeeping. Close out that old legacy account. It's dormant, there's no activity and to close up that account, move it to the general fund.
Okay. Motion approved. Motion by Greg.
I'll second.
Second by Rob. More discussion? All in favor? Carry seven zero. Okay, discussion, 2026 meeting dates. Is that just the way?
Yeah, it was just for you to look at those dates. I kept, I kept them on Tuesdays, same time, other than I think maybe both of them fell on Election Day. I had to move them to the next, like to the next week.
That's the May 12th, the May 12th.
I think we need to have a discussion moving it back to Thursday. I'm kidding. I'm joking. It's a joke, but I'll try it.
Okay, so we don't need a motion or anything? Is that correct?
Uh, no, we'll do it, we'll do it next meeting. I just wanted to make sure there were no changes.
Okay. And also under discussion, I talked and I want the council's approval, basically. I don't need a motion, but basically that we as a council should be sending, draft a letter to all department heads stating our very, very tight budget that we've done this year to make sure they have all taken care of and that we are still solvent and in decent shape this year, but knowing that with the Senate Bill 1 and the legislation that probably will not come next year, with my history of state rep, won't do anything budget-wise for another two years, or two years from now, then to ask the, to inform the department heads that we want them to please stay within their budget and operate their departments that way. We will not entertain appropriations except for emergencies. They have an emergency, then they need to come, but with the lack of extra funding that we're going to have and with that, then we need to ask them to stay within their budget and stay within their means. So I just wanted approval of the council if it was all right to do that.
I think that's an excellent idea.
Yeah, that's fine, fine with me.
I'm fine with it.
Okay. Rob's still thinking it over.
Me? I'm, I'm good with it.
Okay.
I, I, sorry, I didn't know if you needed me to say that.
Well, we just, we'll definitely send it to you so you'll see it.
It may or may not help, but at least you will have.
At least we're all set.
Have said something, yes.
Try and make them aware of it, as aware of it as we are.
Yes.
Everyone is aware of it.
You know.
It's going to be worse.
Yeah, we feel that it will be, so we need to tell them to hold the line if they can, so. Any public comment? Sign-in sheet? I don't think so, but.
Just to be clear, when I dropped this letter, so I'm saying basically that we're not going to have, entertain additional appropriations unless it is an absolute emergency.
Absolute emergency.
Okay.
So they can come to us and say this is an emergency, but they're going to have to really explain it and bring it up.
There's no one on the sign-in.
Okay, all right. Any other business coming forward, council?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Rick. Second?
Second.
I'll second it.